Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I did get a notice on my iPhone from, I guess it was Lafayette Police or somebody about a car, a house with a car crashing into it. I'm so sorry to hear that was yours, Tom and Mary Ellen. My goodness, I hope no one was injured. So I want to especially ask our prayers and extend our sympathy to Bonnie Montoya, who's usually with us. Her husband Antonio died on Monday. And we, Tony and Bonnie have been members of St. Perpetua for many, many years. Dear friends of us all and faithful members of the community. So we ask God's blessing of comfort and peace for Bonnie and her family, her children, three children, and eternal rest for our friend Antonio. May he who shared so many years of worship and praise of God with us now be able to join the angels and saints in the praise of God in heaven forever. Someone sent me a wonderful little prayer this, a few days ago. It's entitled "A Prayer for Putting on a Face Mask." A Trinitarian prayer. Creator God, as I prepare to go into the world, help me to see the sacramental nature of the wearing of this cloth. Let it be a tangible and visible way of living love for my neighbors as I love myself. Christ Jesus, since my lips will be covered, uncover my heart, that people would see my smile in the crinkles around my eyes. Since my voice may be muffled, help me to speak clearly, not only with my words, but with my actions. Holy Spirit, as the elastic touches my ears, remind me to listen carefully and caringly to all those I meet. May this simple piece of cloth be a shield and banner, and may each breath that it holds be filled with your love. In your name and in that love, we pray. Amen. For quite a few years, we've been hearing the names Trinity Center and the names Winter Nights Program. But tonight, we have the opportunity to welcome some guests who will put a human face to those wonderful organizations that we've tried to support over these years. So I'm happy to welcome them, and I'll ask Mary Turgerson if she will make the introductions for us since she's worked with them and knows them.
I will do that. And again, I echo Father John's welcome to Winter Nights and to Trinity Center. Both of these are outstanding agencies who are helping our homeless and the working poor. And extra praise to all of you because of, with the COVID virus, you've had to jump through hoops and do things that you probably didn't even think you could do. And so it is greatly appreciated. Many of you on the call are familiar with Winter Nights because St. Perpetua has supported them over the years, and we've actually participated in tutoring or cooking or serving at their meals. This evening, we have Judy Stillman, the Executive Director, and Bill Shaw, the Program Director, who will be sharing their stories about Winter Nights with us. And our second agency, as Father John said, is Trinity Center, which is in its first year, I think it's the first full year in their new location. And Leslie Gleason is the Executive Director and will be giving us insights on their programs and their work. Before we get started, just a brief moment to say that each year California Assemblymen and state senators are invited to honor a nonprofit of the year for their district. And I believe it was just this afternoon that Trinity Center, it was officially announced, is the 2020 California Nonprofit of the Year for the state or the Senate District represented by Steve Glazier. So hats off and congratulation, Leslie, to you and your team. What we will do tonight is we'll start off with Winter Nights and listen to their story for about 20 minutes, and then we'll turn it over to Leslie for about 20 minutes, follow it up with questions and answers and some information on what St. Perpetua is doing to support the homeless also. So if we'll start with Judy and Bill. I'll let you unmute yourselves and share with us your story.
Okay, well, I will start and I will tell you that Winter Nights is entering its 17th year as of November 2nd this year. And I will tell you a little bit about what the history of it is and what we've done previously. And then Bill can tell you about what we've done, we're doing this year. We have, we generally have 18 to 20 faith congregations. And years ago, when I first started with Winter Nights, St. Perpetua was one of those congregations that were hosts to Winter Nights. But then we kind of outgrew St. Perpetua's. But now that you have a big enough fellowship hall, you can do it again, maybe next year. I do know that many of your congregants do help with Winter Nights at Aranda Community Church. And so, and one of the things that people have done, as Mary mentioned, you supply food, you supply meals, you supply tutoring for the children. And sadly, this year, we're going to, we're eliminating all the tutoring. And Bill can explain a little bit more about that. But previously, what we've done is had 18 faith community, 18 to 20 faith communities. And we start in September, we end in June, and we take in families up to nine at one time. They live in tents in the fellowship hall of different congregations. And then we have another 40, 35 to 40 congregations who help supply food and tutoring and social events, activities that are really fun for the group. Our main goal is to get families into, into Winter Nights and then housed as quickly as possible. So sometimes we help families with finding jobs. Sometimes we help them with getting, getting things off of their credit report so that they can more easily apply for, to live, to get into apartments. And so we do a lot of things that will help them get into and become, live in sustainable, sustainable housing. This year, in the previous years, we have been a project of the Interfaith Council of Contra Costa County. But now we are presently Winter Nights Family Shelter, Inc., and we are incorporated with our own 501(c)(3). With that, we have formed a board, which is, which just was formed this last, about a week ago. And so we now have a nine-member board that's going to help us with our organization. The whole part of the organization where the shelter functions is pretty much Bill's responsibility. So he'll talk about that. But in order to sustain Winter Nights, we have to have folks that will help us raise money. And of course, St. Perpetua does a good job of that for us. We've attended several spaghetti dinners, and that was wonderful. And once again, you can't do that this year. So we're going to, we're going to have to do things a little bit differently. We do have a video to show you, and do you want to, Bill, do you want to talk first? Or do you want to have them show the video? His mute button isn't working. How about if we show the video and then you figure out? Oh, there you go.
Yes, it's, I showed the video, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, Kristoff, you can go ahead and show the video.
Since 2004, Winter Nights, along with generous congregations, has provided shelter and support to homeless families with children in Contra Costa. Last season, they sheltered 53 people and stably housed 12 adults and 19 children. Here are two of their stories.
I have four kids, and there was an incident with my kid's dad. And CPS got involved, and they told me I'd take the kids and leave. So I had nowhere to go, so I had to find a place to stay.
Two kids, busy lives. I was working full-time, had never experienced being homeless. And with two small kids, that was the hardest part, knowing that my kids were gonna roam the streets with me. When I found out about Winter Nights, I was relieved. I felt like I was being blessed.
The Winter Nights' unique approach brings together the power of faith communities to shelter and feed families, to provide space and time to begin recovering, and to provide services that help families overcome obstacles to housing. While parents work on achieving goals, kids can just be kids.
There's always, you know, games for them to play, kids to play with. And then the tutoring and stuff after school, that helped a lot.
They always enjoyed books, but my daughter Yasmin was motivated to excel, to get the incentives.
You have to remain strong for your kids and your family, and just keep going. Don't give up.
Brighter futures for families means brighter futures for children. Winter Nights helps families home. Generous donors and volunteers like you make our work possible. Thank you.
Do you remember when we lived in Winter Nights?
Yes.
Do you feel like you learned something from that place?
I think I learned that it's okay to be homeless because we could get other helps sometimes.
And that is a video that we have. We have it also on our website. And we have a website that will address, talk about some of those things. I will say that the, the three families that were shown on that, one of them has recently purchased a new mobile home and a large one for their large family. And another, one of the other families, the boy, one of the boys was having, had a birthday last, I think it was April, maybe May, last May. And one of the things he wanted for his birthday was a place to live, and they got a new apartment on his birthday. And the other family is, it has been successfully housed for a couple of years too. So we appreciate them very much. So Bill, you want to talk about what's happening this year?
Yes, I will. I have all sorts of problems with my, with my phone and my laptop today. Can you hear me? Okay, that video really represents, I think, the best of Winter Nights. This is my 11th year with the program, and to see the growth, to see families come back and share with them their stories. It's more than just the way we work with the family, but it's the compassionate care that we demonstrate to all our families, that we want them to succeed based on who they are and where they're at at the time they enter the program. This being my 11th year, going through all the COVID changes, it's the same thing, the same compassion, the same care. We strive hard to see that our families feel comfortable. They are, they feel safe, because that's the key. How safe do you feel in a shelter? And if you can feel safe, you can grow, you can excel, you can go beyond just the everyday. How do I survive? What do I need to do to survive and thrive to be successful? I have the daunting task of putting all the pieces together. That is what I do. Working with St. Perpetua over the years, Karen and her co, and her volunteers had been a blessing to see that there's a community out there that is there to support the family that are in crisis, are stressed, and to see that they grow. One of the things that the video, for me, it's so heartfelt. The family that you see on the screen, Judith, they left about five years ago. And they are still housed. They are doing very, very well. And she, almost every Christmas, I get a text from her saying, hello, how things are going? And when she entered the program with her two kids, the youngest child was, I think, two, spoke very little English. By the time they left out of there, they were non-stop speaking to everybody and just running around. And it was just a joy to see how they took to the program, felt safe, and with that place of love and joy. One of the things that we do, or strive to do, is make sure that we understand what the parents, where the adults, where they're at, what are the boundaries to success? And sometimes we cannot always get the housing that they may want or need, but what do you need to do? No, do we need to find mental health services? Do we need to work on GED? How are you budgeting? Are you budgeting? Do you have a job? What are the barriers? And we work with them to make, make sure those barriers are met. You have to remember that we're seasonal, so we only have eight to 10 months to do all this work. So they come to us, and they have to be ready to, to work and to be successful. We had two fantastic managers that does all the case managers, management for us. And they both were in the shelter at different times in their lives. And they bring a vision, a view, a sense of understanding that you couldn't ask two other staff to do at the level that they do it. They are totally aware of the needs, of the resources, and push forward on it. But not to get into all that, let's talk about this 2020-21 season, which has been, for everyone, complete, how do you create a new, a new environment, a new world, a new program out of chaos? And we have. We have managed to line up seven different host congregations to give us 30 days at a time where we are sheltering in place. I mean, my heart goes out to each and every volunteer and all the coordinators, just for the love of this program, to be able to say, hey, we're not using our social hall, we're not using our gym. You can get it for 30 days. And then they have no volunteers, as we are a volunteer-based organization, and the strength of the staff to support that. Currently, we have one family. One family, a mom with a three-month-old, which was living in her car when she called us. It took a week to get her into the shelter. Following the new county guidelines, they had to have a COVID test and results back before entering the shelter. The success and the partnership that Winter Nights has is, her first two days before entering the shelter, the Crisis Center 2-on-1 was able to give her two nights in a hotel. We followed up on the third night, because we still hadn't had her results back, with a night from St. Giovanni Hope Conference. Still no results, and the fourth night, Winter Nights gave her the fourth night in a hotel room in order to have her and her three months out of, off the street and out of the car as it was getting cold and wet. That's what we do. That is what I think is unique about Winter Nights. We could bend and flow to whatever is need to happen at the moment. We're not stuck where we have to say, you cannot come in at all. We can't, we can say, hey, let's work with you. How can we work with you to get you off the streets into the program? This year, we're finding, because we are, our third week being open with one family, a lot of barriers that we didn't see prior to opening the season. You know, where are the families and why are they not coming in? One thought is the sheltering in place. And one thought was simply the fact that we opened two months late compared to September. But the phone calls are coming in. I have a family right now, I'm working with a family of five. Hopefully by Monday, they'll have the COVID test back, and they get into the program. And then we'll work with them, meeting their needs, working with the kids, because three of them are in school, online school, Zoom classes. And making it successful, make sure that we can get them back into housing so they can feel that she can once again support her family and support the three kids that she has. But this has just been a year of changes, a year of transition, and a year of just complete total, you know, feet underground, and what can we do to be successful? And to have phone calls from Marjorie, from Trinity, core outreach team, 2-on-1 coordinated entry at supporters and partners, such that many, many volunteers you see every year have been a blessing. And that is the strength, as you can see through the video, of Winter Nights.
Thank you, Bill. That was wonderful. I want to add a couple of things. One is that we had, when we restructured our whole system this year, we went from 18 congregations to eight, and many, many of the congregations that hosted have now become co-hosts. Also, we have said there will be no volunteers there, so we've added an extra staff. But the one most wonderful thing is that all of our staff from last year returned for this year because they really believe in the program, and they really are, they, they are just a wonderful supportive group, and we love having them. The other program that we have started this, this year is called Continued Success. And that, we contact former clients that have been with us, and we help them with any difficulties they're having. One family, we helped with a month's rent, no, yeah, it was a month's rent, simply because they were out of work because of COVID. But now they're both back working and they're sustaining themselves. So those are the kind of things we're have to, having to deal with this year. And we will be more than glad to take questions, probably after Leslie talks, right? Okay, Kristoff?
What, thank you, Bill and Judy. It's, it's heartwarming just to see the video and to feel the gratitude that people have for what you're doing. And yes, we, we, within the Outreach Committee and Outreach, you're one of our agencies that we do support in the spaghetti feed, we all miss that because that was always a fun time. So for questions, put them into the chat or just make a little note. And after Leslie's presentation, we'll take questions for either one of the agencies. And now I'll turn it over to you, Leslie.
Yikes, yikes. Now I have to be technologically proficient. So let me share my screen. And hopefully, we can pull up the PowerPoint and then hopefully a video. Alrighty. Slideshow, there we go. How's that look to everybody? All right, great. All right. So at Trinity Center, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to be with you all tonight. And big props to my colleagues at Winter Nights, who have not only gone through an organizational change over the last year, but they, like we, have had to deal with huge changes about what is able to happen and required to happen to keep people safe over this winter period during a COVID pandemic. They've just been amazing, and they've carried through, and we are proud to be in their company. And I want to thank you all parishioners for being here tonight and for caring and for being concerned about the issues of homelessness and people experiencing homelessness, even in these most trying of times. And thank you, Mary, for making it all happen. Mary was going to be my point in time count buddy last January. Then we got reassigned to different people, and I got to meet a great guy from St. Bonaventure Catholic Church. So it's all good. But it's all those interpersonal connections that really, really matter, make a difference. And that's what we're about at Trinity Center. At the heart of the message, that's what it's about, people to people, recognizing each other as people. Yes, people with challenges. Yes, people with need for resources. But that together, we really can positively affect each other, even in the middle of all the craziness that's going on. So I am happy, happy, happy to be with you tonight. Trinity Center's mission is to be the doorway to opportunity for homeless, and not only homeless, but working poor people because working poor people are only one heartbeat away, one paycheck away, from being homeless. And we do it with care and compassion and love. It's not just about providing a meal, but it's doing it with a smile. And most importantly, we invite everybody to be part of our mission. There's a role for everybody, funders, supporters, people who pray for the work that we do, people who legislate with their congressional people. It all makes a difference, and each of you can play a role in our mission, in Winter Nights' mission, because it's the same mission, basically. At Trinity Center, we are led by core values, including compassion, respect, individual responsibility, recognition that we each affect each other, and together we can really make a difference. And that to help people who are experiencing the disabling condition of homelessness, that with a little bit of help, a little bit of guidance, they really can regain their humanity and their power to make a difference in their lives. This is the entryway to our beautiful, beautiful, beautiful new space. When I last talked with St. Perpetua folks in March, this was still just a dream, honestly. People had started moving into the apartments, but we weren't yet on our digs on the first floor, which is sort of, if you walk down this pathway and then head to the right at the end of the building, that brings you into the, the entryway to Trinity Center. But what's remarkable about this picture is it's affordable housing, permanently affordable housing for people who need it. On the far left-hand side there, you'll see St. Paul's Episcopal Church. And at the far middle, that's Walnut Creek Presbyterian Church. So we, we're not necessarily linked with any particular faith-based community, but many of us and us as an organization and our roots are faith-based. So we bring that spirit and energy and love to our work every day. Whoops, wrong direction. Trinity Center was officially started in 2012 as the outgrowth of a previous project called Fresh Start. And since our founding in 2012 and 2015, we operated our first overnight winter shelter, recognizing that people in Walnut Creek needed a safe place to be, at least, if not always, but at least during the cold rainy winter months. In 2018, we broke ground on our new building that you just saw in that photo. And in 2020, not only Trinity Center, but many, many new residents moved into the beautiful new building. And that's the door to Trinity Center. So you come in, you're welcomed, straight ahead. We're hoping someday to have a wall of recognition, but right now, it's just a beautiful wall. But this is the doorway to opportunity, at least for some people. It's not the only opportunity, not the only place. We work in concert with many mother, many other critical and important nonprofit organizations, including, God love you all, Winter Nights, but this is our doorway. And when you come through the doorway, you're going to get not just a meal, but you're going to get access to showers, laundry, clean clothing items, or the ability to do your own laundry. You're going to get access to computers, telephones, and have a place where your mail can be brought to you. So important things like your car registration or voter registration or letters from family and friends can still get to you, even if you're couch surfing. Coupled with all those basic need services, we have member advocacy, and we bring people together to support each other because the experience of homelessness is very isolating, very stigmatizing. And the minute that people recognize that there are others in their situation, they gain strength from each other. And honestly, the conversations you might hear in our, well, not our dining area right now, but outside, as we're still serving meals outside, there are jokes, there are songs, there are hot political debates because people want to stay in community and communion with each other. And that's something that I'm really proud that Trinity Center can provide. We help people link with community resources, which hopefully will be part of their road out of the experience of homelessness and back into the goals they have for themselves and for permanent housing. And most of all, we're just a safe refuge, and we're doing it all with COVID precautions, which, as Bill and Judy have said, have been really something this year. But this is our beautiful new space. Now, it wasn't designed with COVID in mind, to be sure. And if you were to walk in today, you would see all sorts of plexiglass barriers to make sure that we're at least doing our part in reducing the possibility of transmission. But people have access to sinks, to private shower units, to laundry, free laundry, which if you're in Walnut Creek, believe it or not, there are not that many public laundromats. So the ability to wash your clothes and be presentable because you've come and used our services here at Trinity Center is, is huge for some people. So the ability to wash your clothes and be presentable because you've come and, and used our services here at Trinity Center is, is huge for some people. And then we have a day room as well as, which is beautiful. It's all well-lit, open to the outdoors. And we have storage lockers, which again are a place where people can keep their personal belongings, which are so precious to them, safe while they're in our, in our center. And you can't see it from this photo, but the other thing that's really cool in these lockers is they all have individual outlets. So people can charge their cell phones while they're locking them up for safety. And that too is huge, because for many of us, and certainly for people experiencing homelessness, communicating through a cellphone is, is key. It's the only link you have to people. So here they can come and charge their phones and that's so easy to do. Whoops, wrong direction. And here's a center picture of our dining room. Before, we were all eating outdoors with a monitor where we have online classes, where we have information loops for, resources for people. And even sometimes we watch fun movies, because that sense of community, that sense of belonging is so, so, so important to us. And then come March, COVID. We were going along great, just great. We were in a, in a space looking forward to moving and everything had to change. It has really made a difference for our members, for the behavior that we expect of each other, for the costs and supplies that we need. We've gotten help with all of them through government and private resources. But these are a reality for our members every day. We insist on hand washing. We insist that people wear masks. We do hand sanitizer about eight million times a day, every time you walk in the door. And that's important because our major goal is to keep each other safe. And by keeping each other safe, we help keep the wider community safe. We're also proud that we too offer an evening program. It's for individuals, not for families. It's going to be different this year. Kind of like Winter Nights, where everybody has to be in a tent twelve feet apart and stay in their tent or be masked while they're out of the tent. That's what we're going to be doing. We'll be doing it in the Walnut Creek Armory. We won't be able to serve as many people this year. But that, that is doable, because many of our most high-risk people are currently in the hotels coordinated through the county. So we're really grateful for that. And then sort of the next tier of vulnerability, we'll be able to welcome into our shelter, which is, we're just gearing up to get ready. Whoops, wrong direction again. We were really, really proud, along with a fellow Catholic congregation in Walnut Creek, St. John Vianney Church, to offer one of the first two safe overnight parking programs in Contra Costa County. We were able to operate that with full permission from the church, from the neighbors, from the city planning commission for the periods of October through June. It's not an inexpensive program to operate it with professional security. And so at the end of June, we had to put it on a pause. And we are hoping to reorganize it again, but as, as you all probably share, the church itself is, is being really careful about using its space and keeping each other safe. And that's meaning we may need to hold off on reopening our safe parking program. But it was super successful. For anybody who might have been part of that, super successful. There were never any incidents, according to the Walnut Creek Police Department. And what it meant was that individuals and largely older women with jobs were able to know that they had a safe place to park their car, sleep in their car, which is still not the same thing as a bed, but sleep in their car and know that they had overnight access to a restroom. And they were watched over by professional security, so nobody would mess with them. Nobody would pound on their window in the middle of the night, making them leave. And that meant they could get rest and go to work in the, the next day. These are obviously issues among people experiencing homelessness. Cause or symptom, jury's out on that. But the trauma of homelessness can lead to people self-medicating through substance use or needing significant mental health services. And we are able to either provide people those services on site or connect them with county resources. And in the end of the day, our members are largely part of the Walnut Creek community. They're not people who came from somewhere else. They're here. They grew up here and then they fell into hard times. But at Trinity Center, we have three guiding principles: to respect ourselves and each other, absolutely no aggression of any type is permitted, and no banned substances, even legally available substances, because a lot of our members are still struggling with recovery. And we don't want to do anything that's going to trigger that issue for them. So these are non-negotiables and people who find that that's not working for them, sometimes they're not welcome at Trinity Center. And, and that's because, at the end of the day, we want to make sure everybody is safe. But no ban is forever. There are consequences, but we welcome you back with open arms after that period. We also welcome our animal companions. I'm not a dog lover. I'll be the first to admit that. But Trinity Center is a place where our animal companions are recognized and welcomed, of course, with expectations. But those beloved pets and service animals become everybody's companion. And so, you know, it's just one big creation and we make way for everybody as part of that. We connect people with resources. We have partners in this success. We're not alone. Goodness knows, we can't do this alone. We have resources and connections from county government, local government, other nonprofit organizations, certainly community support from individuals, from parishes like St. Perpetua's, from civic groups, all of which makes a difference and is key to us being able to provide our services. And unfortunately, our demand for services is on the rise. In the fiscal year ending June 2019, we had served eight hundred and sixteen unique individual adults. And let me just say a thing about that. Thank goodness, Winter Nights is available. Because Trinity Center, while we are, we don't restrict people from coming who have minor children, there are better other options for them. And so the minute we see a family with children come in, we welcome them, we feed them, we make sure they're good. But then we connect them with other resources like Winter Nights or Shelter Inc. that are better equipped to meet their needs. And that's part of, being part of the network of service in our community. But what happened was by the next year, June, we had jumped up to nine hundred and seventy individuals. That's a huge increase. And so far in 2020, we're seeing at least a twenty percent increase in the number of individuals coming for service. We offer meals, we offer showers, we offer loads of laundry, clothing items, pantry items, each of which is essential for our members to get through the day and to create a better future for themselves. And we offer a variety of connections to services to focus on housing, employment, and health and benefits. And then, of course, one of our really most key contributions now is to be living proof, living proof, that organizations can create affordable housing in our community. This one happened to be with St. Paul's Episcopal Church and with the Resources for Community Development as the nonprofit housing developer. And then we have a home in this place too. But at the end of the day, we'd probably all agree that the answer to the housing crisis is more affordable housing with permanent, with services for people who need it. And Trinity Center is living proof that that can happen. And because it can happen, an additional forty-four units exist in Walnut Creek, mostly smaller units. And they're occupied by people who are formerly homeless, who are low income, they're working families, persons with disabilities. All the people that we know are part of our community and deserve and need a safe place to live. And Trinity Center is honored that we provide supportive services to just under half of those families because the transition, honestly, from chronic homelessness, being homeless for more than a year, or in some cases, more than a decade, it's, it's a process, right? You've forgotten how to cook. You've forgotten how to pay bills. And it's important to have someone there to help you rebuild those skills. And of course, this beautiful space became our new home in the middle of May 2020. So here are a few pictures of that beautiful new space, the entryway. Those are the apartments up above and then our patio area beneath, which is certainly coming in handy now as we're all sheltering in place and eating outdoors due to the COVID restrictions. Here's another view of our beautiful patio area. And we're not done yet. That's the beautiful thing. We're doing a lot for people. We will continue to do a lot for more people. And we don't know what's going to come around the corner as people who maybe never experienced even the thought that they may become homeless or housing insecure or food insecure are facing hard economic times. Thank you very much, COVID. And we are ready for those people to come and get basic services and reconnection to others through us. But we're also focusing on our young adults, the people that are eighteen to twenty-five, who have been hidden but among us. And we really believe that if we can help this younger group of people not become chronically homeless, that that's the best prevention of all. So we now have a program and a staff person dedicated to meeting their special and unique needs. Whoops, wrong direction again. And here again, it's all about connection. It's all about community. It's all about people helping each other, peer-to-peer, professional-to-peer. When we do things together, we all do them better and the results are just phenomenal. And it's been so much my honor and privilege to be part of Trinity Center over this past year and to represent our staff, our board members, our volunteers, and most especially our members, because they have done amazing things and we will continue to do amazing things with thanks from St. Perpetua's. And I'm really hoping that I can figure out how to queue up our little video. But in the meantime, there's something everybody can do to help us, help Winter Nights, help all the organizations like us. Of course, you can donate if you're financially able to. You can educate others, like you've learned something tonight, right? Share that with your friends. You can advocate, call in on city council meetings, write to your legislator. Those things really make a difference. At some point, when we all can welcome volunteers back on site, we'll want you here too. And at Trinity Center, we have a fabulous newsletter and that's a great way to keep up with what we're doing. And most, most, most importantly, when you encounter somebody who's on the street, you don't, maybe you don't feel comfortable, you don't know what to do. Maybe you're not comfortable giving them money, but you can always smile. You can always recognize that they're a human being. And you can always, like I do, decline to give money, but with a smile, like, sorry, can't help you with money, but, you know, I see you. And that matters, because the experience of homelessness for individuals and for families is one of isolation. It's one of stigmatization. It's one of becoming invisible. And we can each make sure that even the most vulnerable among us are recognized and honored as human beings. And isn't that really our mission as people of faith? I think it is, as a person of faith, and I really join in that effort with all of you. So I would like to try and figure out how to share the next thing, because we have a little video too. I think we're doing all right on time, yes. And if I can't figure out the video, then we can just go straight to questions. Is that okay? Okay, great. Let me try this video thing. This will be the first time I've tried to do this. Okay, I'm sharing my screen and I'm picking, picking this video. There we go. And I'm going to queue it up. Who says you can't teach an old dog new tricks? Here we go. Can everybody hear it okay? No, okay. Tune up your volume and I'll do the same.
Leslie, what you have to do before you share, you have to click optimize for video. Remember that? So you may have to stop share. Okay.
Okay, you know, even without the music, it's just background music. So just watch the pictures and enjoy the words.
Okay. Thank you very much, Leslie and Judy and Bill. What's, it's great to have insight. As I said earlier, we hear the names of the organizations, but you put a face on them for us and visualizing them for us is a, a great way to just help us encourage and continue our support. You know, this Sunday at our, our Sunday Gospel is Matthew twenty-five. "I was hungry and you gave me to eat. I was thirsty, you gave me to drink, a stranger, and you welcomed me." And you, both Winter Nights and Trinity Center, certainly put that scripture into action. So thank you very much. I, one question I had for, for Judy and Bill. What was the origins of a Winter Night Shelter? How did it begin?
Well, I'm, I would love to tell you, but I see Joe Kerner, who's one of your parishioners. And she, she knows that history really well. So Joe, are you willing to talk about that?
Sure. Yeah. Winter Nights began back in two thousand and four. And I, I believe it, it came about as a result of a number of things, but the loss of, of a couple of homeless family programs, the homeless family program and another program more like Trinity Center in county, particularly in Concord. And, and so it began actually with a, an attempt by a group of women who were some members of the Interfaith Council. And they were hoping to, to take over the, the Arinda Library that had been closed to build a new one. And that didn't work out too well. They got a lot of pushback from the community. But then in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, the whole La Morinda community became a part of the Winter Nights program, which began just to cover just the winter months. And a number of, of churches in the La Morinda area and I believe also Temple Isaiah were participating by offering two weeks in their social halls or whatever. And so it began back in two thousand and four and has continually grown. Over the years, Judy and I began working as tutors back ten years ago or so. And when Watson was and also the Songay were instrumental in beginning Winter Nights. And it was continually supported by the Interfaith Council all those years. I don't, when, I remember helping at St. Perpetua's before, certainly before I was a parishioner at the time I was at Santa Maria. But when you had the old social hall right next to the church and people were living, I mean, the, the Winter Nights program was, I mean, people, I don't think there was much division between, between the families. They, they was basically the social hall with the tables to eat at one end and the place for the kids to, and I guess, you know, recreating at the other end, and then just a bunch of sleeping bags in between. But
I do remember that too. And at one point, they, they had PVC pipes with sheets over them for some privacy. But a couple, couple of years after that, one of the traveling tutors said, why don't we use tents? And so we've been using tents for the past several years.
Certainly, the programs have grown and, and developed over the years and that's wonderful to see. One of the questions asks how long Winter Nights runs during the year. And I think you said from September through June.
Yes.
In addition to which, we are going to have, we're, also, we're working on having a safe park program this year. We've had one for the past couple of years and that has been a blessing to homeless families who are living in their cars. And we're working on that for again this year, which would be January to And we're working on that for again this year, which would be January to April. Billy, were you gonna, do you know more information on that, or?
Not yet. Very close.
Okay, anyway, so we're going to do Safe Park as well this year.
Good. And the question is asked about partnering with Loaves and Fishes for a lunch program. Can you say something more about that?
Yes, that's been one of the beautiful things that has happened in our new space. Loaves and Fishes, as you know, has public dining rooms for anybody, no questions asked, just come in and get a hot meal. And at Trinity Center, we were also serving hot lunches. And we realized there was some overlap there, and that if we could bring in the experts in that, which is Loaves and Fishes Contra Costa, then that would free up some of our energy and time to do the case management and the member advocacy. So since historically, Loaves and Fishes provided a couple of our lunch meals every week when we were at our temporary locations. And since we've moved into the new space, they have been providing lunches Monday through Friday, hot lunches, prepared in their central dining room, or through other volunteer groups that then are Loaves and Fishes volunteers, and providing the staff and the volunteers to serve it. Where we're hoping this will go, we certainly had hoped up before this point, but thank you, COVID. But soon, we will now be offering, we will also be a public dining room for anybody in Walnut Creek, not necessarily who identifies as homeless, but anybody who needs a good hot meal in a safe and loving place. It will, until the foreseeable future anyway, be meals out the door, which people can either take to their places or eat in our facility. But that has been a really significant partnership, so that they can expand what they do, and they do best. And we can continue to offer the services we offer and create an opportunity for the wider community. And hopefully, before too long, when the written restaurant industry gets back on its feet, they are ready to do a culinary arts training program, so that people will gain job skills and employment skills to join the food industry. So those are all parts of our partnership with Loaves and Fishes Contra Costa, and we're really, really happy about it.
That's great. And congratulations on the beautiful new facility. What a wonderful addition that is. Live long and prosper.
Thank you. We can't wait for the day that we can show it off to everybody. That COVID definitely messed that up. We had all these plans for grand openings, and none of that has happened yet.
It will, in due time. This will pass. We know it will. I'm grateful to our parishioners who are active, our outreach committee, who for many years has been kind of our parish's arm of outreach, and for our social justice people that are helping to raise our consciousness and awareness. And I asked one of our volunteers, Karen Calvis, if she would say a word. I know this Sunday, we've got a warm blankets collection. Karen, do you want to say a couple of words?
Sure. Thank you. And so Sunday, we have the Share the Warmth, our annual drive for coats and blankets and all those warm things that are needed to keep healthy and warm. So that's one of the many things that our group does. We also, today, we served brown bag lunches down at Friendly Manor in Oakland. On Thanksgiving Day, we're going to be feeding two shelters over in Oakland with hot turkey and mashed potato and stuffing meals. And we also have monthly food drives, where we support those less fortunate with the food to St. Vincent de Paul and to the Food Bank. And so there's other things than just Friendly Manor, or than Winter Nights and Trinity Center, but those are definitely two of our favorites.
Good. And thank you. And thanks, Karen, because I know when we have an event and there's food left over, we know we can call you and you make sure to people that need it. And again, carrying out that Matthew 25 injunction, "I was hungry, and you gave me to eat. Thirsty, you gave me to drink. A stranger, and you welcomed me."
One other thing, Father.
Yes.
And we do have some opportunities. If someone is interested in helping to cook on Thanksgiving morning from 8:30 to 11, we could use another person to do that.
Okay. And what about the food? Do you have enough of your supplies?
We have a few things still needed, and money for the turkeys. If people are interested, they can give me a call, or my phone number is 925-285-4669.
285-4669.
Karen, I want to put it in the chat.
Okay.
And if you want to put your email in the chat too, then so folks can
I'll have both ways.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to thank our guests, Judy and Bill and Leslie, for being with us. And also, our prayers are with you. Prayers of Thanksgiving for the good work that you are doing and that your organizations are doing in helping our needy brothers and sisters. Next Wednesday, we'll take a break. You can have Wednesday evening to cook your turkey, or your goose, or your ham sandwich, or whatever COVID Thanksgiving you're going to be celebrating at home. So no gathering next Wednesday, but we will continue after that. And you know, if anybody has a particular area of interest that you would like to hear about, or recommend someone to join us, please let Kristoff or myself know. And I looked over the list of, you know, since May, and we've covered a lot of ground on these Wednesday evenings, educational, inspirational, entertaining, personal, social, spiritual, artistic. So thanks for being part of it during this time. I hope that it's helped to be a good distraction from the COVID doldrums. And it's certainly, I've appreciated being able to see everybody not in person, but personally, and without masks. That's the best part, to see our smiling faces, other than just the crinkles in our eyes underneath the mask. So may you all have a good Thanksgiving week, and stay safe, and God bless you, and keep you, and have a peaceful night, everyone. And again, thanks to Judy, Bill, and Leslie.
And thank you.
Thank you, Father.